In the interest of time efficiency and ensuring that everyone who wishes to address the council is getting the opportunity to do so, the following will apply to all comments made by the public. Each speaker shall be allotted three minutes to address the council unless such time is extended by the mayor or by questions from council. Groups shall designate a spokesperson to avoid repetition of comments. Every effort will be made to avoid interrupting speakers. We thank you for participating in your city government. With that, I call to order this Thursday, April the 9th, a regular meeting of the city council. At this time, we'll have our invocation by Pastor David Merced Cruz from Family Life Church. And if you'll please stand, remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. Will you please bow your head as I pray? Dear wise and loving Father, first let me say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for your life itself, for the measure of health, and for sustenance and for friendship. In the scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities since you have established those very authorities to promote peace, order, and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular for this assembled council. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give them assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of St. Cloud. It is in your most blessed name I pray. Amen and amen.
Thank you. If you'll please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated.
I was caught by this. I couldn't move.
Okay. I lost my screen. There we go. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Blackwell?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Here.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yeah.
Councilmember Askew?
Here.
Councilmember Trace?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. I'd like to begin with a statement. First of all, we hope that you and all of your families are staying safe and healthy. We are all experiencing unprecedented and challenging times. The coronavirus pandemic has imposed unique changes and interruptions to our normal daily lives. And we know that as a community, St. Cloud is strong, and we will get through this. As mayor, I wanted to assure you that although operations at City Hall have been limited and restricted, the city of St. Cloud remains open for business. Our first responders, water and wastewater operators, sanitation collection employees, our building inspectors and other city team members continue to do a great job serving all of us, the citizens of our city. We cannot thank them enough for their services and their continued dedication. As for your city council, you know, we must continue to meet in order to conduct the business of the city. As response to the current crisis by executive order of the governor, your city council has been authorized to temporarily modify its traditional manner of meeting and utilize communication media technology to conduct its meetings. Tonight's council meeting is the first meeting we are conducting using this technology. We appreciate your patience, and we assure you that during this time, the city remains committed to providing the public a fair and reasonable opportunity to participate in council meetings. We appreciate your understanding as we work through this new manner of conducting meetings. For tonight's meeting participants, as the presiding officer, I'd like to request the following. I request, first of all, that each speaker should request that they be recognized by me before speaking. I will do my best to quickly recognizing call upon you. Number two, we ask that all video conference participants, please use the mute function and only unmute yourself when you seek to be recognized to speak and while you are Third, we ask that all video conference participants not designated to participate by video, we ask that you please disengage the video portion during your participation. Number four, we ask that you please remember that this meeting is being broadcast to the public, and therefore, we request that all background distractions that you may have at your location as best as possible be eliminated. Number five, members of the public will be given the opportunity to address the council when called upon using the public access area. If an email or a written statement has been timely submitted, it will be read into the record at the appropriate time. The normal rules I stated earlier regarding public comment still apply. We ask for your understanding. We thank you for your cooperation and efforts to ensure this council meeting is conducted in the best interest of the city of St. Cloud. With that being said, if there are no objections, we need to address the read-on item under council action item number five. Madam Clerk, would you please read resolution number 2020-067R?
Resolution number 2020-067R. A resolution of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, authorizing the use of communication media technology to conduct public meetings for the preservation of continuity of government during the novel coronavirus disease 2019 state of emergency, and authorizing the city manager to take any and all measures reasonable necessary to implement this purpose and providing an effective date.
Mr. Menzerris, do you need to address this issue at all?
Well, I would just, thank you, Mayor. And so this is the resolution that we've put together to address how you're going to do these meetings using communication media technology. So this is a general resolution we put in place. As you all know, you have a resolution that deals with how meetings are handled in the normal sense. This resolution allows you to deviate from that other prior resolution on a temporary basis, really during the, for the length of the state of emergency. So it creates the formula that we're going to use tonight for the meeting. It also provides for you to grant the authority of the city manager to adjust it or to amend it or tweak it, as the case may be, so that for future meetings, there might be some additional changes that have to be made. Generally speaking, for tonight, it allows for participation by the public, as the mayor indicated in his earlier statement, through essentially three means. Number one, it would be through the public access area, which is essentially the council chambers. The second area would be through emails or way through emails, or the third would be through a written statement received by the city. So we feel that this is appropriate, consistent with the governor's executive order. We believe it's appropriate that it be adopted now because you do have a resolution in place that says that your meetings are going to be held. And again, we would, this would be a temporary item. So at this point, we'd ask if there are any questions about it. If there aren't any questions, then we would ask for motion to approve the resolution as presented.
Ms. Jaworski, is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak to this item?
We have no audience present and no one here to speak on that.
All right. Thank you very much. Do we have any questions by the council? Mr. Cooper? Is your...
No, sir.
Anyone have any questions? Can I enter? Oh, Ms. Matheny?
Sorry.
Councilmember Matheny?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion to approve from Deputy Mayor Matheny, a second from Councilmember Cooper. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
That brings us to our presentations. We have a presentation. Madam Clerk, if you'll please read that presentation to be presented.
Presentation of the CAFER financial reporting for the city of St. Cloud fiscal year 2018-2019 by Purvis Gray &amp; Company LLC, independent auditors via phone.
Is there someone to speak to this?
Yes. Good evening, councilmembers and mayor. Can you just gesture if you can hear me?
We can hear you fine?
Perfect. Perfect. Thank you. Again, good evening. This is Tim Westgate with Purvis Gray &amp; Company. Matt Gano is the manager on engagement, and he is also attending the session. I'm the audit partner on it, and we appreciate the opportunity to still present to you under these unusual circumstances, for sure. We wanted to present the annual financial report and the results of our audit. This is the final step in the audit process for the year ended September 30th, 2019. We have already reviewed the details with management and a few of the council members yesterday, so today is just a brief overview, primarily an opportunity that you should have received the comprehensive annual financial report in a PDF form. And if you've had an opportunity or have any questions about the audit, we welcome those. Otherwise, we'll just touch on a few highlights. We do remain available if you have any future questions, or of course, we believe management could assist with any of those questions. The audit that you had received does meet your external financial statement reporting requirements that fall under the Florida statutes, as well as the rules of the Florida Auditor General, and your filing requirements under the secondary bond markets for investors who are holding city of St. Cloud bonds, with whom is that the city has maintained their bond ratings of AA3 and AA1 for the rated debt. Of course, you do have direct borrowings that are not publicly trading, that this financial report will also get filed with each of those lenders. As well, this financial statements are required by your granting agencies, and this year did have a federal single audit, which includes additional audit procedures related to compliance and internal control for those federal award programs. This comprehensive annual financial report for the year ended will also be submitted to the GFOA. That's the Government Finance Officers Association, CAFER Award Program, which the city has been awarded for over 20 years now. That award does recognize the cities that go beyond the minimum requirements of generally accepted accounting principles, and that implement expanded disclosures and reporting in the spirit of transparency and full disclosure. We do expect that this CAFER that you received will receive that award again. So we commend management and all the efforts and the city's support behind participation in that. As just a reminder, management does remain responsible for these financial statements and responsible for internal control. Our role is to issue our opinion on the financial statements, which you would find in the auditor's report of that package. We're pleased to report that we have issued an unmodified or a clean opinion. That is the highest level of assurance. Again, we commend the city on that. Our report is dated March 20th, just at the time of the emergence of the COVID pandemic. So our report does include a new paragraph, an emphasis of a matter, and the city has also added in its footnote a subsequent event disclosure about COVID and the unknown potential impacts. So those are some new items that are in there. We do recognize that, who knows? Nobody has a crystal ball on what's coming, but we do recognize that the council and management is working diligently to minimize those impacts. Some of the financial highlights that we noticed, the general fund is the city's main operating fund, of course, and they managed to maintain a fund balance of 13 million, which does meet the city's established minimum fund balance policy, and it meets the minimum requirements recommended by the GFOA. That's a Government Finance Officers Association throughout the country. The city has spent multiple years rebuilding that fund balance following the 2008 recession to allow for smoother cash flows, plan for future capital improvement plans, and better prepare for risks like hurricanes, and fearfully so the current pandemic. Overall, as a whole, the major governmental funds all had positive fund balances, with the exception of the road impact fee fund, that you may notice when you review the financial statements. The road impact fee fund, however, is in the process of being closed out by management, and those activities are, have been, are being taken over by the mobility fee fund in place of it. So it's just part of that closeout process. Your enterprise funds as well continue to appear to improve overall with positive net positions and positive working capital. Of course, the only exception being the continued issues with the DSD fund, which we recognize the city is fully aware of those issues, but we are required to include findings and noncompliance because of the DSD bond default, and also some related management letter comments. So you'll find some of that information in the back of your report. I think it's information you're fully aware of, nothing new surprising in that regard. As part of our audit, we do also review internal control and compliance over financial reporting and grants where applicable. And our reports, which are included at the very end of that PDF reporting package, do not report any material weaknesses, significant deficiencies or noncompliance, except for that DSD bond default that we already discussed, and there are new matters that's reported in there related to required update to the city's purchasing policies under the federal uniform guidance. Those are some new requirements that came in under the grant related to your grant funds. We are aware, though, that while we didn't have to report it, we do know that since that time in February of this year, council has already updated their purchasing policy, and that's already been addressed, but we still needed to report it, include it in the reports. So those are some of the highlights. We're pleased to say there aren't any alarming matters or anything surprising. Had there been any of those, we certainly would have been talking to you before today. So with that, we do want to thank city staff. While we do work with almost every city department during our audit, it is particularly the finance department who we work with the most throughout the audit process. So we thank Wendy and all of the staff in finance particularly. Management was very cooperative and accommodating throughout the audit, and we appreciate their professionalism. So with those brief highlights and presentation, I'll invite any questions or comments that you may have.
It would help if we went back to where I could see everyone on the screen. Does anyone on the council have any questions you'd like to ask?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Cooper, Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you. What will happen is DSD for Stevens Plantation in the next few months, when we move out of that? Mr. Menzerris?
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. So is your question, what would be the, what would happen with the DSD bonds after the properties are all sold?
Correct. Yes. I kind of know it's coming. You know, we should be out of it.
Well, as we've explained to you before, the trust agreements and the bonding documents related to the DSD bonds provide that the DSD bonds principal will be paid out of sale proceeds from the Stevens Plantation property. There is no other repayment source for those bonds other than the proceeds, the net proceeds from the sale of the property. So that was what was agreed to by the bondholders when they funded the acquisition of the Stevens Plantation property by the city and ultimately by the DSD. So our understanding and reading of the bond documents is that when all the properties are sold, if there is bond debt, that remains outstanding, that essentially that bond debt will have to be released because there won't be any proceeds left to pay it.
It just walks, it just walks away. It goes bye-bye.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Remember, that's the DSD bonds.
Right. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Do we have any other questions from council? Madam Clerk, do we have anyone who has any comment from the public?
I have no one here present to speak on this item.
All right. Since there's no additional public comment, could I entertain a motion that we adopt the CAFER? Oh, I'm sorry. We actually got to go to that, don't we? That's council action number one. If we could please have that read.
Request the city council's acceptance of the city comprehensive annual financial report, CAFER fiscal year 2018-2019, as presented by Purvis Gray &amp; Company LLC, independent auditors.
Mr. Sturgeon, is anyone else from the staff wanting to speak to this? Okay.
No, Mayor.
All right. Any other discussion? Deputy Mayor Matheny, do you have a question?
No.
Could I entertain, council, any other questions? Could I entertain a motion that we adopt this request regarding the annual financial report?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Cooper, a second from Deputy Mayor Matheny. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. This brings us to our citizens forum. Any person who desires to comment on any item not on this agenda is provided this opportunity to address the city council. Each person is requested to complete a signing form to be provided to the presiding officer.
Do we have any people?
Prior to or as soon as this practical draft, the person addresses the council or via email. Do we have any comments, Madam Clerk?
We have none at this time, thank you.
We have none. With that, then we'll move to our consent agenda. The next portion of tonight's meeting is the consent agenda, which contains items that have been determined to be routine and noncontroversial. If anyone in the audience wishes to address a particular item on the consent agenda, now is the opportunity for you to do so. Additionally, if staff from members of city council wish to speak on a consent item, they have the same opportunity. Are there any items on the consent agenda that any one of the council wishes to address?
I believe there were some changes to item B.
Okay. I'll fix them to recognize our city manager, Mr. Sturgeon.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, yesterday I sent you a changed, an updated scope of services for Tetra Tech for the emergency traffic signal. If you recall, we had discussed putting a pedestrian crossing in in cooperation with the school board, and I just made that change with Tetra Tech. I wanted to bring that to your attention. It's on the first page. It's item three, and it says addition of a pedestrian signal and push button to two proposed signal standards located opposite each other for crossing of Canoe Creek Road. The crossing would be on the north leg of the intersection.
That's item B, is it not?
That is correct, Mayor.
Okay. Are there any questions about that? And could I entertain a motion for the adoption of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion for Councilmember Cooper, a second from Deputy Mayor Matheny. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Brings us to public hearings. The first item. Madam Clerk, will you please read the first item, and I think item two and three are for the same items. So if you read items one, two, and three.
First public hearing and introduction for ordinance number 2020-04. An ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, to annex into the city of St. Cloud approximately 36.27 acres identified as Hickory Tree, located east of Hickory Tree Road, north of Mabel Simmons Road, west of West Shore Drive, in accordance to involuntary annexation provisions of Chapter 171.044 Florida statutes. First reading and transmittal for ordinance number 2020-05. An ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a future land use designation as low-density residential to approximately 36.27 acres identified as Hickory Tree, located east of Hickory Tree Road, north of Mabel Simmons Road, and west of West Shore Drive, providing for amending of official zoning future use map of the comprehensive plan, following the planning commission's recommendations, and proof of publication, applicability, and effect, severability copies on file and effective date. First public hearing and introduction for ordinance number 2020-06. An ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a zoning district of R1, single-family dwelling, compatible with low-density residential future land use designation, adopted by ordinance number 2020-05, for approximately 36.27 acres identified as Hickory Tree Road, located east of Hickory Tree Road, north of Mabel Simmons Road, west of West Shore Drive, providing for entering the designation of official zoning map, following the planning commission's recommendations, proof of publication, severability, conflicts, and effective date.
Is anyone on staff going to address these continuants? I think there's a request for continuance on all three of these items.
Mr. Anderson? Thank you. Andre Anderson, Community Development Director. The applicant has requested that the item ordinance 2020-04, ordinance 2020-05, and ordinance 2020-06 be continued to a date certain to April 23rd.
Is there anyone in the audience that requests to speak to these items? Adam Clerk? I assume that's no?
We have no item. Nobody can.
No one? Thank you very much. Then let's begin with the first item, ordinance number 2020-04, for continuance to April the 23rd. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion from Councilmember Cooper, a second by Council Deputy Mayor Matheny. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carried five zero.
Brings us to our second item, ordinance number 2020-05. Could I entertain a motion for continuance?
So moved.
Second.
We had a motion from Councilmember Askew, and we had a second from Deputy Mayor Matheny. Madam Clerk?
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. And that brings us to ordinance number 2020-06. Could I also entertain a motion for continuance?
Motion to approve.
So I have a motion from Councilmember Askew. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Cooper. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Brings us to item number four. That's the deputy clerk, please read.
First reading for ordinance number 2020-09. An ordinance for the city council establishing the proposed property known as Hickory Tree, Old Hickory, and further described herein and recognize the Old Hickory Community Development District created and chartered by Uniform General Law and Uniform Community Development District Act of Florida, Chapter 190, Florida statutes 2001 and thereafter, acknowledging Uniform District Charter expressed in Section 190.006-190.041 Florida statutes as referred and provided by Section 190.004-4 Florida statutes confirming Sections 189. as referred and provided by section one ninety point zero zero four four Florida statutes confirming sections one eighty nine point zero thirty one three Florida statutes establishing a district on the property proposed in this petition and designating the initial members of the board of the district board of supervisors and designating the proposed land area within which the district may manage its finance, its basic infrastructure, system, facilities, services, improvements, and projects, providing for severability and effective date.
Thank you, is there someone to speak to this?
Mr. Anderson?
Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, Andre Anderson, planning and zoning director, community development director. Um, we also have available tonight the applicant who is, I think, also joining us remotely. Uh, this is a request petition for establishing a community development district called as part of the Old Hickory Canyon Development. Um, the general background, next slide please. The general background is that it falls under the requirements of the Uniform Community Development District Act, Chapter one ninety. And the applicant did petition to the city to establish the community development district for this residential development, next slide. Um, generally, the overall background is that the purpose of the CDD and the applicant will be able to go into more detail about this later is that the CDD will establish a plan for how to finance, acquire, construct, and operate and maintain several different infrastructure items related to the government such as centers for water reuse, stormwater, conservation areas, onsite water improvements, as well as other infrastructure such as landscaping. Next slide. In addition to that, it also meets the requirement of one ninety point zero zero five, one eight two of the Florida statutes. Um, we did receive a consent that was provided by all the landowners whose land will be included in this boundary. And in the petition, it includes an initial board that's established per the statute requirements of one ninety point zero zero five, one eight three. And that the petition just provides all the required documentation to date. Um, we are still in discussion with the applicant regarding some other item which was raised during our briefing with respect to um, um, other infrastructure items such as an integral agreement to um, ensure that the items identified in the CDD would in fact be enhancements to the um, infrastructure. And we are still um, going to be discussing those items um, prior to adoption of the petition if the board does approve this CDD. This CDD is consistent with our strategic plan goal for growth management and for infrastructure. And um, staff recommends approval of ordinance twenty twenty zero nine. Get any questions, I'm happy to answer them, as I said, the applicant is available.
Would the applicant like to speak? I can't see the screen, so I don't know. Can we go back to the screen where I can see all of the council? Thank you. So the applicant is not wanting to speak at this point? Is there any public comment?
Yes. This is, I'm not sure if you can hear me now.
I can hear you now.
Okay, thank you, I'm Jan Carpenter, um, here on behalf of the petitioner, Lennar Homes LLC. Um, I'm an attorney for Lennar Homes in filing the petition. And I want to thank you all for letting us appear by video conference in these strange times. We also have available representatives from Lennar in case there are questions on planning or zoning or anything that's really outside the scope of the CDD. I want to thank your staff, Mr. Anderson and the staff have been very helpful over the past few months, this was filed back in January. It took some time to get before you. And we have a PowerPoint, most of it, I think Andre went through very well describing what a CDD is. And I think you're all familiar with your experience with Stevens Plantation, uh, Gramercy Park and the other CDDs. Um, so they put the PowerPoint up quickly, just the location, about a hundred and seventy five acres, if you go to the next page, uh, you can see this is, and again, an attorney did this, so it isn't going north-south, it's on its side. But this is the site plan that was approved by the city back in September of eighteen. So at this point, Lennar was very far along in the construction. Uh, why is CDD a good thing? I represent governments, much like your council, quite a few CDDs and government agencies. CDDs, um, they are special purpose governments, very limited purpose to basically finance, acquire, and maintain infrastructure. Basic infrastructure and some recreational facilities. Um, as you know, CDDs are a good thing, and they were formed way back when the CDD statute one ninety was formed was to try to keep the cost burdened on the homeowners in the particular subdivision or area and not burden the entire city for infrastructure. The costs going through a CDD also allow the developer to have a higher level of amenities and features, which are a key item that cities are looking for today to improve their neighborhoods and their city life for their residents. Other important thing is after seven years, the CDD loses control by the developer who was the original landowner and the control goes to the residents so they can help work on the level of amenities, they can help keep things going. The most important item on that last screen that we didn't put on because it's important to talk about is CDDs are a very important funding mechanism, and especially with our latest crisis. CDD fees, as you probably know, are all collected on the tax roll. And what that means is at times of crisis back in our two thousand nine recession, quite a few developments and areas that did not have CDDs had no maintenance. HOAs don't have the ability to collect on the tax roll. So the neighborhoods with HOAs, their stormwater ponds were not maintained, there were lots of problems. The large CDDs in Alceola County, Reunion Celebration, a number that we work with, they were able to maintain and keep all their facilities up and running and in good course. So that is probably the strongest reason why developers look for CDDs today. We also find water management districts really prefer CDDs to have the permits for stormwater because they can ensure those will be maintained on a long-term basis. And our large crowd. Um, this page here goes through the items for establishment, and I won't read through them because your staff has already gone through all those and they have confirmed those were all included in the petition that was filed with the city. Um, and then on the last slide is basically our request that files pursuant to one ninety point oh oh five, which is what we are filing under. On the next, the next page of the um, we requested this public hearing, it's an opportunity for the public to give any comments by certain factors, and the factors are pretty specific of what the city council is to look at. The first is whether everything in the petition is true and established, and that your staff has gone through pretty completely. Whether the district's the best alternative for available for delivering the community services and facilities, whether they're compatible with the existing local development services, and whether this district is amenable to special district government. The city has a few other CDDs, so I think most of those questions are answered. And we would look today for any public comment and for the first reading to be held today for a second reading in two weeks. And I'm here to answer questions, and I do have some representatives of Lennar to help um, if there's anything on the planning or zoning, but as we said, the CDD is really only a local special purpose government, has no zoning or planning power. And is limited in its scope to just build the infrastructure and they can turn it over to other governments or can maintain it for an eternity, that's the benefit of having a CDD structure. So with that, I guess I'll ask if you have any questions for us.
First of all, Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment?
No, we do not have anybody in the audience to speak.
All right, thank you very much. Would any of the council members like to ask any questions or speak to this issue? I don't see. I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Thank you. Um, when I had my agenda review, you know, we had a little bit of discussion about the CDD and why should we let them have a CDD, and in my mind, it feel like it's it's more advantageous for the developer because they get, have mechanisms to to fund the infrastructure and then the homeowners end up paying it on their tax bill. So for me, I, you know, I understand this is the first reading, but I'm really going to want to see the details of why we should make this a CDD. You know, I want to see amenities, I want to see the maintenance plans, I want to see, you know, like, you need to sell me on why we're going to move forward with a CDD before the next, the next council meeting.
Uh, may I respond?
Yes, you may, go ahead, Mr. Carpenter.
Thank you, um, the amenities, we will certainly help you and go through a list, we provided a list a couple of weeks ago to the staff of the enhanced amenities, pool, cabana, tot lot. There'll be a multipurpose field, dog park, eight-foot concrete trails, enhanced landscaping. Um, I know the developer has worked with some of the neighbors and installing fences and making sure there were no other complaints for the neighbors. But the biggest and most important thing from the perspective of forming a CDD is the long-term maintenance. Without a CDD, you have an HOA which can't collect, which is not open to the public, CDDs have to follow sunshine laws, they have, they're audited just like a local government is, all the same restrictions as a local government, which makes sure that things are maintained, which makes sure no one is hiring folks that are friends, they have to go through a bidding process just like the city does. It really is a way of making sure that everything is done in the sunshine, done in the public, and done the right way for infrastructure. So that's the number one reason, the collection on the tax roll is a huge benefit rather than HOA in that it can be collected and will be collected during bad times.
Okay, but I'm, for me personally, I'm really going to want to see details on this and and details on to the enhancement, you know, I mean, you're going to have to do a lot of these things regardless if you're a CDD or not, so I'm going to want to see what you're doing above and beyond what you would be required to do as a regular development.
Okay, we're happy to provide you with anything you would like to see or to meet with you, whatever would be best to get you the information you're looking for.
Do we have any other questions? Well, I'm certainly in agreement with Deputy Mayor Matheny. I'm willing to support this on the first reading, but I'm, would certainly like, I'm certainly going to be looking for, you know, uh, a little more detail than assurances of where it's going to go from here. Any other questions or comments? Could I entertain a motion for adoption? Councilmember Askew?
Um, motion to approve.
We have a motion from Councilmember Askew. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Trace, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye, for the first reading.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter.
Good, thank you.
It brings us to item number five. Um, Madam Clerk?
First public hearing and ordinance for twenty twenty dash twelve. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Saint Cloud, Florida prescribing the manner of holding a regular election to be held on the first Tuesday after the first Monday in November, each election year to wit November third, twenty twenty, with a primary election on August eighteen, twenty twenty, if required pursuant to chapter twenty, article one, section twenty of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Saint Cloud, providing an effective date.
Mr. Sturgeon, you need to speak to this, or anyone in staff?
Madam Clerk?
Um, this ordinance is the first reading to put the the election in place with the supervisor of elections, setting the dates and the times, and also setting the precincts.
All right. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak to this items, you have a record of, Madam Clerk?
We have no audience at this time to speak on this.
Thank you, do we have discussion questions by council, Councilmember Trace?
I just had a question of, do we know yet if any of the election dates will be moving due to COVID?
I have reached out to the supervisor elections office and they don't have any any reasoning at this time to change any of the election dates since they will be in August. And we will, if we do have to do that, we would move forward on that. But at this time, they don't have any direction from the state to move the dates.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Matheny? Do you have a question? Okay, any other questions? Are we, could I entertain a motion for the adoption?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion from Councilmember Matheny and a second by Councilmember Askew. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay. Madam Clerk, that brings us to item number six, could you please read that?
Public hearing for resolution number twenty twenty dash zero fifty seven R. A resolution of the city council of the city of Saint Cloud, Florida, amending resolution number twenty nineteen dash one sixty nine R, which adopted the fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty budget for the city of Saint Cloud, finding the city manager has certified their prior year fund balances and or current revenues available in the budget for additional projects and programs in various funds, not including the original budget, requiring the budget to be increased to include additional funding in the various funds and make supplemental appropriations within the funds.
Thank you. Ms. Colazo?
Good evening, Council, Wendy Colazo, Finance. Twenty twenty zero fifty seven R is presenting a one hundred and sixty-five thousand reclassification of funding. This is a corrective reclassification from budget amendment number two. The second item on the list is two million dollars for additional services related to ice pigging and regular domestic pigging for the water lines. Um, I will be open to any questions, that is all I have on the budget amendment at this time.
Madam Clerk, is there anyone in the public who wishes to speak to this?
We don't have anyone in the audience to speak on this at this time.
Thank you. I'll open it up to questions or discussion by council, Councilmember Cooper, are you wanting to speak? Yes, sir. Um, Mr. Sturgeon, you and I had spoke about the probably of maybe putting it out for leasing the the ice pigging or either buying, purchasing at the same, same time instead of keep spending money, we could put a couple hundred thousand dollars towards the purchase or lease on that ice pigging.
Mayor, may I be recognized?
Yes, you may.
Yes, thank you. If you recall several meetings ago, and I also did speak with Mr. Cooper, the vehicle that they're using for the ice field is for sale, as you know, the company is being moved to Canada. Uh, the truck is for sale, it is, they have it under a lease agreement right now. And, you know, we, I would like the authorization from the council to look into that a little deeper and negotiate with them to see if we could take over that. Remember, if we purchase that unit, we can use that, you know, for many, many years to clean our water system throughout the entire city. And I think would be a good investment, but I'd like some direction from council to go ahead and do a little bit more investigation and negotiations with Suez.
Councilmember Cooper? Thank you, back to you, Bill, again. What about the pressure washer that you were telling, you and I had discussion about the new pump that they've got in Orlando or somewhere?
Mayor, could I be recognized?
Yes, you may, please.
Uh, may I ask Mr. Wheeler to address that, the new technology that was brought to his attention?
Mr. Wheeler, could you please join us?
Can you hear me?
No, I can't, you got to unmute, unmute your mic. Or unless you're at another.
I know, I might I need to, okay, now. Now, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Hello?
Yes, speak speak loud.
Okay, the uh, there is another technology, the a former employee of mine that works for another uh company now made brought my attention. Uh, the type of equipment that uh basically takes the water out of the out of the water pipes, cleans it and puts it back in. If you kind of, if you if you've done uh blood transfusions, the blood given platelets before, you know, the it's similar to that type of approach when you basically take the blood out, they screen out the platelet and put the put the plasma back. In the same situation, they'd be pulling the water out of the out of a pipe, out of the pipe to a fire hydrant, running it through uh the filtration system and then injecting the 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 filtered water back into the back into the system.
Is there any description as to comparison between the ice pigging and that process as far as effectiveness?
No, not, no, not not this time. I I just became aware of this technology. Uh, I haven't had a chance to get in with the company. I do know that they aren't looking for places. This is brand-new technology. The my my contact told me they were looking for places to demo the uh technology. Uh, so I will, we will be making contact with them and and see if they can come and and have, like you said, evaluate it against the other things that we're doing.
Brian?
Councilmember Cooper, would you like to ask more questions?
Yes, sir. Brian, could we see if we could get that uh company come down as quickly as possibly? Right, what I'm trying to do is save some money. I'm looking, you know, it's gonna be until the end of June, July, the ice pigging, or we could stop them sooner and either buy the ice pigging quicker like in the next thirty days, or we could go and have the the five hundred thousand dollar piece of equipment come down from Orlando. Brian, could you give me a heads up on either either one of those?
Yeah, I don't I don't know. Uh, Councilman Cooper, when you're talking about the five hundred thousand dollar piece of equipment from Orlando, I don't know what that, I don't know what, I don't know to what you're referring in that in that case, but.
Half million, half million dollars, excuse me.
I know, but what do you, what are you, what piece of equipment are you?
Well, could we have them, we have them, could we have them down here quicker than not just sitting for another three to four weeks before we could get them down here? Could we get them down here quicker than that?
Well, I'll, yeah, I'll certainly look into that. I I like I said, I I just became aware of this and let uh let Bill know of it, but I haven't had a chance here this week uh to get to try to run them down yet, but I'll I'll certainly investigate that.
That was, that was my question. What I'm, what I'm trying to do is, Brian, is just to see if we could, you know, save a couple hundred thousand dollars out of the ice pigging money that we were gonna be spending. And let's cut ice pigging, let them go, you know, thirty days, and they could give us the instructions how to run it. We could go ahead and purchase it for lease or buy or the other new equipment.
No, I under- I understand the issue about the, I understand the issue about the ice pigging. Uh, I've had conversations with the people at their at their corporate level. Uh, they're the ones that let me know that they were, it was for sale. Uh, under our present situation, it's uh with the COVID, with the virus and everything going on, they're not, nobody's kind of in a position to want to deal with that right now, but but the the cost of that equipment's gonna, it's gonna be negotiable, but it's gonna be somewhere between a half a million and one point two million dollars. That's what kind of what they're, I mean, they have two, two vehicles. One of them, they they, one of them is uh probably in the half million dollar uh range that they have left in terms of uh value or like probably they owe on the vehicle. We have another one that they have one point two million that they owe on the vehicle. I'm sure we'd wanna get the half million dollar one, but but the but the kind, the company in Canada gets first dibs on which truck they wanna take. So we, if we were gonna bid on a truck, it would be the truck that the people in Canada don't want.
Okay.
But I I understand your issue. I I'm perfectly, you and I are on the same page. I I think the contract with the ice pig gotten pretty expensive, but I, we gotta find something that's ju- just as effective to re- and cheaper to replace that. I I agree with you a hundred percent on that.
That's where I'm coming from. I'm just trying to save some money and not just keep, you know, dragging it on out. If we own it, lease it ourselves, we can twenty-four seven, we can keep going, work a whole lot more, more often.
Yeah, yeah, I see. Yeah, I mean, yeah, we're, you and I are on the same page philosophically. I I would like to to find some way to use our money more efficiently, for sure.
Okay, how do we, how do we make this happen quicker? Bill, can you take care of that and get it done?
Let's, why don't we get some input from the rest of the council first, because I'm in, I'm in agreement with where you're headed.
Okay.
Just wait, see if there's any other input from other council members? Councilmember Askew?
Yeah, um, I'm I'm with uh Mr. Cooper and uh Mr. Wheeler. I think it's something that needs to be priced out and figured out and uh brought back to us to see if it's a purchaser or not, and do you have the funds for that?
Well, I'm certainly in agreement with uh, I think where Mr. Cooper is going. I uh, you know, we're fixing to spend two, over two million dollars just finishing out the contract on the ice pigging. If we could purchase the truck ourself or authorize the city manager to sit down with uh Mr. Wheeler and evaluate what would be the best option uh financially, where, how could we save the most money, and what would also be the best for the long-term maintenance of our water lines. I you know, I think we all agree that the main issue is we gotta get the lines finished, cleaned out. And if we uh could have a vehicle or a piece of equipment that would continue doing that, could even possibly be leased out to uh other cities, uh it might ultimately have the potential to pay for itself. Does anyone else on the council have any comment or questions at this point?
Just, Mayor, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to see if we can save this two million dollars and cut it less than that and get it done quickly. That's where I'm coming from. Thank you.
Brian, how much of the two million dollars we're talking about has already been spent? I thought this was to to wrap up the contracts that we already have, either the work that's already been done or the work that's coming up over the next thirty days.
Yeah, there's uh, when you a- approve in your next, after this budget amendment, your next resolution, you'll be approving uh some expenditure of some of that money. There's, there's what I, what uh, we termed the domestic pigging or the regular pigging. Uh, there's a, there's a contract for that and an amount for far future. And and if you've looked at the contract for regular pigging, you'll note that it's quite like, quite a bit less expensive than the ice pigging, but it has some some disadvantages, some of which uh the city experienced this week uh and is experiencing right now. Uh, and then uh, and then when you approve the third amendment to the ice pigging, you'll be spending some of that money. So so you're right, there's, some of that will be, two million will already be committed, but you'll still have well over a million plus still uncommitted.
Uh, well, I don't see light, but Mr. Sturgeon, what do we, what kind of authority, maybe even you or Dan need to uh comment on, what do we need to do to give you the authority to evaluate this and and make a wise decision? Uh, Ms. Colazo, I saw your light on. Mr. Sturgeon? I I thought, I saw your light. Come on, I didn't know whether you were trying to speak or what.
No, sir.
No, no, sir. I, you know, like I said, we've got the contract with Suez right now through the end of April. Um, I'd like to have something back to the council within um thirty days and let let Brian and I have time to investigate and see what kind of proposals we can get from Suez and the other company and come back. You know, my goal is the same thing, is get the pipes cleaned out, number one. Number two, if we can save a significant amount of money, I think we should do that also. And then look at the long-term implications of purchasing a unit that can keep our system cleaned all the time.
Mr. Menzares, what do we need to do to accommodate to, at least where I think we're all leaning?
Well, I I I think you can just, there's plenty of direction that's been given to the city manager and to Mr. Wheeler that I think we can just work and see is there an alternative to entering to these ongoing contracts uh with this entity and to get and to get the equipment necessary. So I think uh, unless Mr. Sturgeon disagrees, I think he has enough direction from the council. I think most of the folks wanna move forward. Obviously, we don't have anything you can approve tonight related to the acquisition of this equipment because we don't have the particulars. Uh, and it is, it is a large purchase, so we think we would have to bring it back to the the city council as quickly as possible, assuming we could get it negotiated and put together.
Mr. Sturgeon, do you have anything to add?
No, I I think I've got clear direction, and like I said, that Brian and I are already having that discussion about how we can reduce those costs and still accomplish our goal of getting the pipes clean, so we'll come back with something within thirty days.
All right. Do we have any other discussion by council?
This will be before the next meeting, ready to go.
It'd be the first meeting in May. I'm gonna need thirty days to work with them and see what the other, because I don't know what the other company's schedule is.
Okay.
Go ahead. Do you have something else to add, Mr. Cooper?
No, as long as you can keep it moving, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Could I entertain a motion for the adoption of resolution number twenty twenty dash oh five seven R?
Don't move.
We have a motion from Deputy Mayor Matheny. I'll second it. Madam Clerk?
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Brings us to council action. Uh, we've already approved item one. Item number two, Madam Clerk?
Resolution number twenty twenty dash zero sixty four R. A resolution of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, authorizing the waiver of formal bidding requirements and approval of negotiated procurement for cleaning, disaffection, and dechlorination of portable water pigging and award thereof to Professional Piping Services, Inc., and ratifying the agreement executed by the city manager.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Wheeler, are you gonna speak to this anymore?
Uh, yes, I can. As I, I, uh, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Go ahead.
Okay, so the uh, this is what they, we call regular pigging, and we use the term swabbing. So when we talk to customers, we can differentiate between ice pigging and and regular pigging, in this case, swabbing. This is a type of uh cleaning in which they inject a la- a a large stiff sponge type of mechanism. It's actually larger diameter than the pipe, and it's forced through the pipe and basically, basically wipes the pipe. Uh, and uh, the advantage of this type of uh cleaning over the ice pigging is they can do longer runs of pipe at one time. The ice pigging is limited because they're only producing twenty-seven hundred pounds of ice, so the the length of pipe they can do it at at one time is limited by the 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 amount of ice and the diameter of the pipe. With this type of piggy, you can do longer runs, which is what we did Monday, Monday night, we did uh, Tuesday night, excuse me, Tuesday night, Wednesday morning. We basically cleaned the pipe along Nolte Road from Old Canoe Creek over to Budinger and then up Budinger to Seventeenth Street, did all that in one shot. That would have, normally, if the ice pig pe- uh company had to do that, it probably would have taken them three to four days to do what we did in in one night. The di- the negative about the regular pigging is, experience is that you have to take the pipe out of service when you're, while you're doing it, and that means then when you you disinfect the pipe after you're finished and put it back in service, then the customers experience a precautionary boil water notice for two days, as well as the pipe is out of service completely during the pigging, which which can last, as it did on Tuesday night, it was about six and a half hours that they're without water. That's why we did it at night so the, to minimize the inconvenience. Uh, but it's as, but as you look at the contract, it is far less expensive than the ice pigging. But again, it it's limited to long runs of pipe, and larger diameter pipe is where its real advantage is over the ice pigging. Uh, we intend to continue to use this to do more on Nolte Road, Canoe Creek Road, Neptune Road, such sections like that where we have long runs of larger diameter pipe, which is this type of technology will uh give us uh more bang for our buck. And speaking of my 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 issue and Mr. Cooper's issue, as I said, it's far less expensive than ice pigging for this type of uh work to clean the pipes.
Do we have anyone in the audience that wants to speak to this item, Madam Clerk?
We have no one present to speak on this item.
Do we have any discussion by council? Councilmember Trace?
Uh, motion approve resolution twenty twenty sixty four R.
We have a motion. Do I have a second? Second from Councilmember Askew? Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Deputy Clerk, if you'll please read item number three?
Resolution number twenty twenty dash zero sixty five R. A resolution of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, ratified, ratifying the first, second, third amendments to the agreement dated December eighteen, two thousand nineteen, between the city of St. Cloud and Utility Service Co. For ice pigging domestic water mains, which have been executed by the city manager, providing an effective date.
Once again, Mr. Wheeler, do you, you have anything to add to this?
No, if you all have any questions, this is basically approving three amendments to the original ice pigging contract, a continuation, two of these, which have already been carried out, which was the transmission line from the plant to uh Old Canoe Creek Road, and then also Old Canoe Creek Road was added to the to the work. And then the third amendment basically is, is already stated by the city manager, uh, would 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 have the ice pigging or Suez Company continue ice pigging through the month of April. Uh, the one advantage to the contract, if you've kind of glanced at it, is it does provide the city the ability to terminate the contract on twenty-four hour notice. Of course, the, and at the at the rec- reciprocal, and Suez can also terminate the contract on twenty-four hour notice also.
All right. I don't see anyone in council chambers uh who wants to speak to this item unless Ms. Clerk has something.
No, that's correct. We have no one in the audience to speak.
Thank you. We'll have discussion by, uh, Mr. Uh, Sturgeon, do you have a a comment you wanna make?
No, sir, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry. Uh, Deputy Mayor Matheny, is your, are you wanting to comment? I think she's frozen.
I do.
Councilmember Cooper?
Just a quick one. Um, Mr. Sturgeon, if this, if we go with this agreement here, is this gonna, we could still get out of it quickly and move it forward to go ahead and and uh either purchase or put it on lease? Can we, in other words, can we just swap it and and keep moving and change it into a lease or a purchase out out outright and what we're going to do right now is just to go ahead and spend another three hundred thousand dollars for, or six hundred thousand for another month or two? That's the question. Do we, do we, do we move it to the second ballgame or the third ballgame?
Mr. Sturgeon, would you like to speak?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Ms. Cooper, we'll, we'll look into this right away. We'll, we'll reach out to them. In fact, I'll, I'll get Brian and I to reach out to him tomorrow and see what we can work out, and we'll try to get this moved along quickly. Like I said, I wanna continue the pigging uh both, both kinds and the swabbing until we can come to some agreement um either to purchase the vehicle or continue on with the contract.
You're a hundred percent where I'm at. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Ms. Cooper.
Do we have any other questions from council? We may have dropped Deputy Mayor Matheny. I don't see her online now. Any other questions? Could I entertain a motion for the adoption of resolution twenty twenty zero sixty five R?
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Trace, the second from Councilmember Cooper. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Councilmember Trace? He looks frozen, too. Councilmember Trace, you were asked, do you vote in favor?
Oh, sorry, my computer froze. Uh, aye.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Hi, sorry, my computer froze too, so I missed the, can somebody tell me what we're voting on?
Just say yes.
I had, I had lock off lock on it.
We're voting on item number three under council action. Uh, taking money from the water fund to continue to pay for the cleaning of the water lines.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Brings us to item number four. Madam Clerk?
Discussion and possible action as it relates to Krabby Bills.
Mr. Sturgeon, are you going to speak to this?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I was contacted by the manager of Krabby Bills. They're totally not working right now. They're not doing curbside. They're not doing takeout, and she's requesting a deferral of their current rent. It's fifty-eight hundred dollars a month and some change. Um, I'm gonna recommend that we give them a sixty day deferral, and then, and we can work with Mr. Manzares to figure out what an agreement we have to do to sign that, but just work with them. Um, see what we can work out, but I'd like to request a sixty day deferral of their rent.
Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you. Mr. Sturgeon, can we make sure that we put in, I don't have a problem with Krabby Bill to give them sixty days, but can we make sure that their employees can get paid for that sixty days, that they will pay them? I mean, I want to wrap that in to make sure that they're gonna get their, their money paid. I know they're not going to be working, but let's get them paid for two, few months. Is there a problem with, anybody else?
Mr. Manzares, could you speak to that?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, the, you certainly could put that as a condition on the deferral of the rent. Uh, we'd have to, we'd have to, uh, revise the lease agreement to, to, uh, to require some independent verification that they're actually doing that. Uh, and, uh, I'd have to work through that to do, to, uh, to figure out how we can do that. But, uh, um, that, if, if the council wants to make that as a condition, then we could make that offer back to them. We can make that offer back to them. We can work through it.
I'd make a motion.
Let's, can we, we'll have some more discussion. I'll, I'll come back to your motion, I promise. Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. Um, I like that, um, suggestion that Councilmember Cooper just made. Also, when I had my gender review, I asked, uh, the city manager, what other places do we rent in the City of Saint Cloud, you know? And I was told really the only other one we have is the, the ice cream snow cone shop that's down on the lakefront. So if we're giving, um, a sixty day waiver to Krabby Bills, I'd also like to include the ice cream, um, snow cone shop that's down there. I think their rent, what they told me in my gender review, is two hundred dollars a month.
That's correct.
I don't have a problem with that either.
Councilmember Askew?
Thank you, Mayor. During these trial and tribulations, being a business person, there's, uh, four different ways to handle this situation. And some, some of it's paying, uh, employees, but some of it's paying your employees back. Um, so I don't know which, which road they're taking. There's a PPP plan, there's an I, uh, EIDL plan. So I just don't want to tie anybody's hands. There's a couple other ways of doing this. I'm having the same challenges, uh, with some tenants. So, uh, another way of doing it is you can do a deferral where they end up paying at the end of the, um, lease, they end up paying extra two months or a month or whatever they're, uh, whatever they're getting. So I'm just throwing some different ideas out there. I really don't want to tie a business hands when we're not, um, dealing with them day to day and understanding. I mean, we could probably get with Carly and understand exactly what their, what their plan is and what they're doing. Nobody wants to lose employees. Um, it's very hard out there, but I also don't want to tie Sony's hands and go, hey, you gotta do it this way. If you don't do it that way, we're not doing anything. Um, so it's very tough out there. No one's getting paid. Um, and a lot of, uh, businesses are, uh, reaching out to just about everybody. These federal plans that everyone keeps talking about, they're fantastic. I'm here to tell you, nothing's happened so far. Um, we've gone through two banks, both banks here locally don't have a clue what's going on. Not because they're a bad bank, it's because they're not just being communicated to, through the federal government. So, uh, there is a lot going on. Um, I personally have some stuff out there too as well, and there's, you, you're, it, this is a scary time for businesses, and I'm, I'm, I'm a, I'm a true believer that a lot of these businesses are not gonna come out of this. Um, restaurants especially. So, uh, in, great idea. I would love everybody to get paid. I just, in some cases, that can't happen unless they're doing the PPP plan, which is under the CARE Act, and the PPP plan allows you to pay your employees. But until that comes in, you could go bankrupt before you end up getting any money. It could be a month. It could be a week. It could be two months. Um, by the time that that happens, you could end up depleting all your reserves. Um, not talking from a personal experience, but that could happen. You could deplete all your reserves. The business then ends up going out. So, um, I, I am all about taking care of our employees, but in some cases such as this, where the government shuts you down, there's really not a lot you can do. So I don't want to get in that, um, you know, that's my, sort of my forte, but, um, I get what everyone's saying here. I think it's, um, I, I truly believe that the employees should be taken care of, but in some cases they can't, so.
Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you. Well, I, I, I agree with him. Um, Dave, I, I, I agree with you a hundred percent. Uh, it doesn't matter to me is, is if you pay at the beginning, at the, at the end, the middle, or they pay it back, you know? Just as long as you keep them on the salary as much as you can. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
I don't have anything.
I'm sorry, you have anything? I'm muted. Mr. Manzares, do you have any more counsel for us?
Well, I was gonna make a suggestion to you since that, I mean, obviously, I, I'm, I'm assuming that this tenant hasn't paid their rent for, for April. For, as, as we, as the question that the mayor asked me before the meeting, there isn't any eviction proceeding that's gonna happen anytime soon. Um, we can probably get with the, with the operator, the owner of the business, try to work through some of these terms and figure out where they are, and then bring back, uh, a, a final agreement with the council at the next meeting and just have you approve it there. Uh, and address it. I don't think, uh, uh, I, I think the council's willing to work with them, which, which we understand means that you're not willing, you're, you're not at this point gonna proceed to basically shut down their business or kick them out of the space, so. Uh, so I think like, we have a couple of weeks where we can get this stuff ironed out.
Mr. Sturgeon?
Yes, I, I agree with Dan. I, i- if we could do that, Mayor, that'd be great. We'll work it out, bring it back to the next council meeting.
Are we all in agreement then? Any objections to that?
Well, the only problem I've got is that these employees that are not working, they can't sit around and wait for a month or two before this council makes a decision yester or now. So, you know, it kind of hurts somebody in the pocket, I mean, right now. I mean, if you're talking, Bill, if you're talking about another month from now, that's, that's a long time to hurt employees there. Krabby Bills that are not working and maybe not getting paid.
Councilmember Askew?
Um, I, I agree with it, Mr. Cooper. Um, but again, I don't know what their situation is. I don't know what their reserves are. Um, in, until money that, everyone says, we're gonna get some money to come in here and help out some of the businesses, until that happens. Um, you know, we filled out paperwork, um, my tenants filled out paperwork a week ago. We haven't heard a thing, so. Um, until I guess that happens, some of these people that don't have the reserves, and they, and trust me, and I know Carly, uh, she wouldn't want to lose any of her employees, nor would I, but in some cases you don't have a choice. Um, especially when the government comes and shuts you down, you can't make a dime. You know, what do you do? You, you have to go on unemployment, those sort of things, so it's unfortunate. And, uh, this is something I don't think any of us has ever seen before, especially in this COVID-nineteen, and I believe we have more to come, so. I don't think we're over.
Uh, I know, uh, at my church with my, with our preschool employees, um, you know, we have paid and paid and until finally, you know, we're at a point, we just had to shut it down. And then if you came in and said, well, you've got to pay them, uh, you know, while they're out of work here, uh, you know, first of all, they're gonna go for unemployment, and, uh, the state has mandated at least for now that, you know, even if you work for a church, you, uh, qualify for unemployment. Um, but then if you mandated, you know, we have to pay their salaries beyond that, it, it would really, you know, it, it just totally put it out of business. What's a tough one? I just think we need to authorize the city manager to negotiate, to do what, uh, uh, is best, and I'm sure Dan will help walk him through that. You have anything else to add? So where are we at on this item? Are we authorizing the city manager to, uh, move forward and try and do what's best, uh, certainly for the business, and certainly try and do what's best for the employees both, and bring us back for recommendations? Councilmember Askew?
I, I would suggest doing something like that. I mean, you know, I'm all with, uh, Mr. Cooper and Ms. Matheny. If you, if we can bring and say that they're gonna pay their employees, they might be paying them. They might get the, uh, CARE Act of E V V plan. Um, so, you know, I, I, I leave it up to Bill and, and to try to figure something out. If they pay at the end, pay, uh, take a year to pay the month they miss, or it, it's gonna probably be more than one month. Um, uh, we're gonna be, we're, everyone's closed down until the end of this month, so.
Yeah.
In, in these little places, we're not Walmart, we're not, you know, we're not Home Depot. We're, we're, we got mortgages, everyone's gotta pay their employees, and when nobody's walking through the front door, that's very difficult to do.
So Sturgeon, if we, uh, all right, if we are in agreement, can you move forward with what we're basically, uh, discussing and suggesting at this point?
Yes, Mr. Manzares and I will work, work together to take care of that and bring back the twenty-third.
Okay. Councilmember Trace, I see your.
Yep, and, and I'm fine with what, um, uh, Councilman Askew just, uh, mentioned. And really, we have some questions that if, if they can answer some of those questions about, um, how they're proceeding with their staff, um, during this time, then I think we can bring that back to the next meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Cooper, you have anything else to add?
Uh, I guess, this, Mr. Sturgeon, I guess there's no, no way that you could let the council members individually and not collectively make a decision, but just let us know that, you know, yes, they're, they're, they're taking care of their, their employees and are paying. I'd feel a whole lot better. Could you do, let us know that?
Mr. Sturgeon?
Um, yes, I can let you know.
All right.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Is there anything, any action we need to take on this, Mr. Manzares?
No, sir. I think we got enough direction, and we'll have it on your agenda for the next meeting, and we'll try to get answers to some of these questions beforehand.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Manzares, what do you have for us?
I do not have anything, Mayor. Doing a good job with this unusual situation.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Sturgeon?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have two items. First off, uh, I'd like, uh, the council direction. We have CAG grant money that's left over about twenty thousand dollars, and you have previously authorized me to use that at my discretion. However, because of the difficult times we're in, I spoke to Tammy Madison, uh, the other day. She just wrote a large check, um, from their savings account, which pretty much depleted their savings account for the food pantry. I'd like your direction to, uh, provide the food pantry with five thousand dollars, um, immediately. And in addition to that, I'd like to put ten thousand dollars into our utility assistance fund, which is managed, managed by the council on aging. Um, currently their, uh, balance in that account's twenty thousand dollars. I believe it's five thousand dollars in reserve. Along with that, on the twenty-third, I'll be bringing back additional recommendations for a local stimulus package for, um, our businesses and some utility assistance programs.
Do we have any discussion from council? Councilmember Askew?
Um, Bill, did you get that, uh, email today regarding O U C and the twelve point five million dollars that they're?
Yes, we did.
Can we work closely with, uh, Terry and those guys and just see if we can, um, partner up and, um, spread the funds out?
Correct, and, and, um, Mr. Wheeler's already working on a plan for, uh, water utilities also for assistance. We, we, we think, you know, we're gonna have some issues in the next several months with that.
Yeah, we all are.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Thank you. Um, Bill, what's the CAG grant? I'm, I don't know what that acronym is.
I'm sorry, community agency grant. I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor. That's the ones you do every year, and you guys, it's a hundred fifty thousand, and you guys need to put in your recommendation for grants. So there was twenty thousand.
So when we went through the whole process and we got done and we left contingency, that's what you're talking about, this contingency that was left after we went out?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
So you're saying there's twenty thousand, how much, um, just out of curiosity, because I, have we paid the food pantry? Because I feel like we gave them a pretty, a pretty nice, um, donation. Have we paid them?
Yes, we, we did provide them funds, um, through the, to the community agency grant. Again, like I said, they, they're getting a higher demand because of the situation.
Sure, I just want to make sure that they actually got the funds. I sit on a lot of nonprofits, and it's like, you're promised.
Where's the money?
Yeah, yeah, and it doesn't come over six months or whatever. So there's, you said there's twenty thousand, and you wanted five to the food pantry and ten to the utility assistance fund?
Right.
And then you said you want to do some, I'm sorry, I, you didn't talk to me about any of this, so I'm, that's why I'm asking all the questions. So then you said, then you want to create a program to help businesses?
That's correct. We're, um, we put together a task force to do that, and we'll have recommendations ready to go to the council on the twenty-third.
Are you anticipating the balance of this, um, community grant would go to that?
No, I'd like to keep that amount left in reserves. There could be some other funding mechanisms that we're gonna recommend that we pull from to do that.
And you said right now the council on aging has twenty thousand in their utility assistance fund?
Uh, no, actually, we put fifteen thousand each year into the fund, um, for utility assistance, and the council on aging actually manages that for us.
And that's only for Saint Cloud residents?
That's correct.
And how much of that fifteen thousand is remaining?
I do not know that. I just know.
For me personally, because we're already like not turning people's power off, right? And we're not turning their water off. We've already got those things in place, and we're not charging late fees. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Well, although we don't have, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, we don't have control over the power. That's the, that's still.
Right, the power is already doing that. The power has gone above beyond what we're doing. So like our Saint Cloud utilities, we're, we're already not turning people's water, and we're not turning their utilities off, their water and sewer, and not picking up, you know, we're maintaining all that, and we're not charging late fees. I'd rather the money go into the food pantry, personally, because w- why do they need utility assistance right now? Because no one's gonna turn their power off, and no one's gonna turn their water and sewer off, but they could be starving.
Councilmember Askew?
I agree.
I think the whole fifteen thousand into the food pantry.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yeah, Bill, I was gonna say, maybe we just give five thousand to the, you know, from the senior citizens and the rest of them go to the food pantry. Just a thought.
Councilmember Trace?
That's, I'm good with that as well. Um, and don't forget, there are other, uh, nonprofits in, in and around Saint Cloud that, um, also do food assistance as well.
So you're good with what?
I want, my, my point was give the whole fifteen to the food pantry.
I got your point. I didn't get Trace's point.
Um, I, I was just pointing out that there are other nonprofits that provide food service, um, in and around downtown Saint Cloud. So, just so we don't put all the money out at once, but I'm, I'm fine with fifteen thousand going to the, the food pantry as well.
Yeah, I would support that also. Uh, they're doing an amazing job. They've been inundated, uh, with people coming from the community who are out of work, uh, uh, and in need. Um, uh, and, and I would support that also.
Mr. Mayor?
Yester, Mr. Manzares?
Just one quick comment. One of the reasons why I think Bill was working on the utilities piece of it all was that that would give an opportunity for some of these folks who can't pay their water bills, to actually have their water bills paid. If the money isn't put into that fund, then those water bills remain outstanding and due, and, and really the city does not have a mechanism and probably ha, would have difficulty waiving those, those costs at some point. So those individual residents will have to pay those water bills at some point. The funds that, the funds that would be made available from this available funds would a, actually be used to zero out their accounts, so they wouldn't have to pay those amounts, so. Yes, that's the, the yin and the yang in it, I guess. Yes, that's the, the yin and the yang in it, I guess.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Well, I, I still want the whole fifteen thousand to go to the food. I, I feel like all those details of paying the utilities, that can be sorted out later. But people still have to feed their family.
Councilmember Trace?
I, I didn't think Dave had a question first, but.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I'm watching you. Yes, go ahead, Askew.
Oh, um, yeah, I mean, there's, isn't there some, I don't know, there's that question, I guess for Dan, isn't there some mechanism we could put into place? Or at least can we find out what we are at in the balance of these folks that aren't paying their bills? Is it ten dollars? Is it a hundred dollars?
Um, so I just didn't know how much money is re.
W- w- we're still in the midst of figuring that out right now, cause like I said, it, it, that billing cycle hasn't hit yet. So we're, we're trying to get ahead of it. Like I said, we tried to start getting ahead of this stuff three weeks ago, putting these task forces together. Um, but Brian's working on that diligently right now.
Yeah, I'm, I'm all for the, the pantry. I went by there on Wednesday and they have a whole like train system of people picking up stuff and it's just amazing, so they do great work there.
Councilmember Trace, do you have anything else?
Uh, sorry, um, on the utility assistance program, the maximum uh, assistance is two hundred dollars. Um, so if you can just find out from the council on aging how much they have left before the, the next meeting, we can see if we can, need to replenish that.
What?
Um.
May I be referenced, Mayor?
Mr. Sturgeon?
Yes, thank you. Um, yes, we'll do that. We'll check and see what, what we provided, how much is in that account. Additionally, that stimulus package is gonna include nonprofits, so we come back with recommendations on the twenty-third also.
Well, I'm a little confused at where we're, where we're at. Are we at fifteen thousand, ten thousand? What's the pleasure of the council? Miss, Councilmember Matheny, Deputy Mayor Matheny has uh, recommended we uh, release the fifteen thousand to the food pantry. How many are in favor of that?
We're good.
We got a majority then, okay? We'll, we'll work on the utility thing. Mr. Sturgeon, what else do you have?
Yes, sir. First off, I want to publicly recognize the city council for their leadership during this crisis. Secondly, my staff has stepped up to the plate. Um, you know, we have people that are nonessential that are at home right now. If we've had to call them in for a project, they've stepped right in with positive attitudes and taken care of city business. And I also want to recognize the staff, and I may leave some out tonight, to make this meeting virtual and seamless. I'd like to recognize Howard, DeYoung, Veronica Miller, Linda Jaworski, Ivy De La Cruz, Claudia, Kelly, Jay Mark, Denise, and many, many other staff members that are working behind the scenes here right now to make this go real smoothly. So again, thank you very much for your support and thank you staff for what you're doing for this city and we're gonna get through this. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you. Um, Bill, Sturgeon, if you could uh, react to this, um, you know, as, as I've said in the uh, previous meetings, uh, we need to get our water, you know, cleaned out and get it fixed as soon as possible. Um, you know, no citizen wants to pay for dirty water. And I'd ask you about the uh, the filtrations, the home, home house filtration. You were gonna give us some, how much money it was gonna cost. You know, this, I don't want this thing to just keep rock- rocking on down the road every month, every month, every month. And they've got, you know, ten or fifteen people that are gonna have complaints even after the ice picking. So, you know, it, it looks like to me that some people, it's fixed with the ice picking. I'm hoping with most of them, but some they're not. So if they're not, we need to get, get some filters, get something there and get it fixed up. I mean, you know, nobody wants to pay for dirty water. I don't think you do. I don't want to. I don't think no city council members do. So can you speak to that?
I'm gonna have Mr. Wheeler address that if I could.
Okay, sure. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Wheeler?
I'm sorry, he's not on the call.
Okay, and then I'll, I'll address it. As you know, council, we are continuing the ice picking and the swabbing. We've, we've ice picked over thirty miles of pipe and by the end of April, we should be at fifteen miles of pipe. Another fifteen miles, that's forty-five miles of pipe that we cleaned out, as well as throwing in the swabbing, which we'll be able to do longer runs of pipe. And like I said, there is some issues with that as far as disinfection and, and doing a boil water alert. Um, as you recall, I was supposed to come out with some recommendations for the council back on the twenty-sixth. That meeting was canceled because of the COVID nineteen. And again, uh, we have some recommendations that I'll bring in the next meeting. We've been working through this COVID nineteen. But through that, we've still been doing the ice picking, so we're doing what we're supposed to be doing. We have had people that have come back and said that they still have water. We went out and flushed their lines. We've done surveys. And we're getting a lot of good response that we're, the water is getting cleaned up. And remember that the plant is now putting out clean water and we're doing flushing also now with clean water. So those filters are working, everything's working like it's supposed to. It was many years that resin was in the system, so now we're just working it out of the system. And every time we do ice picking or swabbing, we're removing those things out of the pipes.
Thank you, Mr. Sturgeon. I do appreciate, you know, you getting it, getting it done as quickly as you can. And I think that the uh, employees, they've, they've done beyond and, you know, they've worked a hundred and ten percent so far. And I appreciate them keep going and let's get it done, you know, so we don't have these one, you know, people calling you at ten or eleven o'clock at night and say, I've got dirty water, so. Appreciate it, you know, as soon as they can get it done, I'm sure they, that's what they're doing, so let's get it, get it moved on, passed on through. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Councilmember rescue.
I don't have anything, Mayor. I, I'd, um, this is probably a little strange, but I would like to thank you. It seems like every time I come home, you're on the uh, TV promoting Saint Cloud and helping us with the COVID or, um, the COVID nineteen. So I appreciate all, everything that you're doing for the city. I don't think people see that all the time, so thank you. And staff, everything that they've done, from wrapping up benches to closing down stuff and um, just doing it in a very nice way, along with our police department, our fire department. So I just thank everybody from the city and just holding us together.
Thank you. Councilmember Trace.
Uh, thank you all and stay safe.
Councilmember Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Thank you. Um, I, I would also like to echo Councilmember Askew's, um, kudos to the mayor. I don't really know how you do it. You are everywhere, all the time, at every event, at every update. I mean, you work tirelessly for the city, so thank you so much. I know, I know how much time you put in. So, um, I also would like to thank the staff. I know it's tough right now. I, the same issues happened to me where I normally work in an office and now I have to start working at home and it's just a whole new world. It's a whole new way of doing business and, you know, I know the city has been very resilient and flexible and jumped into this brave new world that we have. So I want to say thank you to all of them. And um, my last comment is really just, um, when we were talking about those community assistance grants, um, just to make sure that we've paid everybody in that whole list. I'm sure we have, but just double check and cross the I's and dot the T's and make sure every, all of the nonprofits have been paid out of that um, list. I'm, I'm sure it's already done, but just double check it.
We'll follow up.
Good, thank you. And if everybody can just sit tight and stay at home and not be out around the city. And um, I went to the grocery store the other day and I was shocked at how many cars were still on the street. So if we can all flatten the curve and um, try to stay home as much as you can. Thanks.
Uh, I'd like to thank all of you for your patience tonight. This has been a whole different venue and uh, you certainly have made it easier for me. Thank you so much. Uh, you guys have done a great job. I don't, I'd like to also thank the city on the landscaping, uh, you know, it's a real shame the uh, city hall shut down and the landscaping around the city, if you all, if you haven't seen it, looks incredibly nice. Looks like a whole brand new uh, city hall and I'd like to uh, just commend how nice that looks and everyone who had a part in that. Uh, I'd also like to commend the, the staff and our city manager and our department heads as they put together this community assistance task force. Uh, you know, I just think we've got to take a look at uh, everything that we can do to come alongside our residents uh, and our citizens to say, what can we do to help you? Uh, because I, you know, I, I think we're looking at businesses closing that may not be able to reopen. I, you know, people have been laid off and uh, the economic impact is just gonna be far larger than I think that any of us have any idea. And so I'm just really um, commending the city manager for putting together uh, this community assistance task force. I look forward to seeing what your recommendations are gonna be. I'd also like to just send another thank you out to all the staff, uh, you know, the police, the fire department, all of our first responders. Have just done an amazing job and you guys have, uh, you've been troopers. Thank you for all that you do. And I'd also like to send out a thank you to the Saint Cloud Hospital, uh, and nurses and doctors and uh, everyone that's working there, Brent Burris and his leadership. Uh, you know, you guys are just doing an amazing job and we appreciate all that you're doing. Uh, I'd also like to uh, just continue to encourage uh, the city, Mr. uh, Sturgeon. Uh, let's, let's continue doing what we're seeing more of now, communicating to the city through positive Osceola and other means, our city website. You know, this is what we are doing. These are the things that we are making available. These are the ways that we are trying to serve uh, the city. And uh, I really like what I see going on communicating and I just don't think we can over communicate. And so I thank you again for all that you are doing. With that, I don't see anybody waving. We've come to our information section and report section. We have a council workshop for April sixteenth that has been canceled. We have a city council meeting scheduled for April the twenty-third at six thirty PM. Uh, I would imagine it might be another virtual experience. We don't know for sure. We have issued proclamations and recognition of water conservation month, as well as a proclamation recognition of the national day of prayer. And I think we probably need to do a whole lot of praying right now more than ever. Uh, like to also make you aware that uh, for your reviews, there weren't list number nine. Anybody have anything else? We done? With that, we are adjourned. Thank you again. You guys are awesome. Appreciate you.